We'll get started. Call to order, the November 7th, full city council meeting. Clerk will call the roll and record attendance.
Anderson Burgos? Bartley?
Here.
Bresnahan? Leahy?
Present.
LeBron Martinez?
Here.
Lisi? McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Roman? Sullivan?
Here.
Tomlin?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Valentine?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
The City of Hoyok.
And the City Council.
A couple announcements. Counselor Anderson Burgos will be running late. Counselor President said he'd be running late as well. And I think Counselor Nelson Roman is away. So with that, we will...
Mr. President?
Yep.
Before we begin, can I just take a minute just to say what a wonderful job that our city clerk and her staff did on the election. It was a fantastic election. I think more people than I've seen in years. So I just wanted to applaud Brenna and the staff.
Second.
Great job.
Second.
Thirty.
Late on the table, we have five items. I do believe the first one is still ongoing because we're still waiting for the gentlemen to come in.
Motion to take off the table, items two, three, four, and five. And adopt.
All right, so we're taking up two, three, four, and five, which were handicap applications. I do believe for all of them, 261 Elm Street, 294 Elm Street, 184 Sargent Street, and a handicap sign for Cabot Street. So the motion is to receive, adopt. Under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
We were waiting for measurements so that we could have the legal forms, so we tabled it instead of putting it back to committee. And everything's in order now.
Right.
Routine business.
Oh. Uh-oh. Who is it?
A second, Matt.
Counselor Valentin. Someone is here.
Somebody who's not here.
Any further discussion? So the motion is to receive, adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public... Roll call for that? Oh, yeah, that's right, because they're handicapped.
Oh, do we have to do it for second and third? Oh, okay. Motion to pass the first reading, I'm sorry.
Motion is passed first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is passed the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion is that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for all the handicap signs.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the signs. Next is public comment. No one signed up. Onto communications. The first one, item six, is a reappointment of a series of people for council on aging and...
Take a motion to reappoint all the people that the mayor appointed?
Second.
Some are reappointments and some are appointments.
So the first, one, two, three, first 12 are first... Nine are reappointments. And then there's two that they're appointing. So those two would have to go to...
Motion to approve the reappointment of the first nine and then to send the other two to public service.
Second.
Yes. However, we could also just approve these... I mean, I know these two people that are... If anybody wants to go to public service, we could absolutely go to public service. However, these people are two outstanding citizens. And I would see no reason not to approve them right here from the floor.
Well, I mean, as the chair of the committee, if that's...
Well, a couple of things. Normal procedure is that new people go simply to be able to ask the questions. And not that they're good or bad, but to ask the questions and to, one, get to know them. That's been the standard procedure across the board. So that would be the recommendation is that they go and follow the same procedure. Not that they're good or bad. That has nothing to do with it. It's more of proper procedure.
Yeah, I disagree with you. Over the 19 years, we've done it many times with people. If everybody feels confident and they know this person, because a lot of times people don't come to public service meetings. And so now you bring people in and there's no... So for instance, I know these people. I know they're great people. So whenever we bring them in, it's me and it's Counselor McGivern and Counselor Lisi, let's say, that know these people. Now, we kind of just wasted everybody's time. So I'm saying if anybody has any objection and moving on with this tonight, we certainly will. And I just hope those people would be at the public service meeting. And I'll make a notation of that.
All right, so currently, the motion was to approve the first nine and send the other two to public service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seven.
Hope you guys are out of the meeting.
For Conservation Director. This is an agreement with regards to that position. And it looks like a salary increase for that position as well.
Refer to Committee on Finance and pending, I guess, an appropriation will be coming our way.
Second.
Second.
To Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eight is Audit's monthly budget report.
Do you even refer to Finance?
Copy Finance.
Copy the Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nine is the city clerk's minutes for October 16th.
Receive and adopt. Second.
Motion is to receive and adopt the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And then number 10 is a DOR requirement for new tax rate. Communication from the city clerk informing us about the new sign-off electronically. I think we all got this as an email.
Motion to receive and keep it in our archives?
Motion is to receive and have the clerk store it.
Can I request a correction on my name, please? It's G.L.D.Y.S. and it's G.L.Y.D.S. It's misspelled. It just... I don't know, not the email, but just so. The listing, in case someone ever looks it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
So motion is to receive and make the one correction for Counselor LeBron Martinez. And Joe?
Can we make a second correction?
Yep.
Joseph? Do we spell that the correct way?
Yeah, Nelson is misspelled, too.
All right, so we'll make sure all the spellings are correct.
It's probably correct in the system, right?
Everyone understands what this is for, correct? In the sense of we now have to electronically sign off on the tax rate, not send that on that form, sign off where we voted, and then send it in. So they're making us be more tax-heavy. So motion is received with corrections on spellings. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eleven is from the assessor regarding DOR certification of values. For the Finance.
Receive and send to Finance.
Second.
Motion to receive and send to Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twelve is the Audit Management Letter from Melanson Heath.
Receive and send to Finance.
Motion to receive and send to Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Just a question to everyone. No trick question, no trick answer. Is anybody looking to review the... I mean, we all got a copy of it. Does anybody want to review this in committee? Or you want to take time and let me know?
Counselor Bartley?
Yes.
Fair enough.
I love you.
Normal procedure is, once the report comes in, is to invite them in to go over it. That's been the standard procedure. Counselor Bartley?
And who from the municipality gave the replies?
That would be all the department heads that were requested by the report. They can tell us that.
But it would have gone through Bellamy.
Well, yeah. Anything that was requested of a department head would go to...
The auditor.
The auditor, of which then to Bellamy as well.
So we'd want to make sure that whoever gave the replies should be there. The mayor should be there.
Yeah.
And Melanson Heath can attend as well. I guess that'd be helpful.
Right, so...
Yes, certainly, there should be a chance to have a... Ask a couple of questions on that, for sure.
So that'll be brought up in Finance. We'll see what their schedule is like.
Motion to take items 13 to 16 as a package?
Second.
Motion to take 13, 16 as a package and suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirteen is Park and Rec Meeting Minutes. Fourteen is Redevelopment Authority Minutes. Fifteen is the Fire Commission Minutes. And sixteen is the Thomas J. O'Connor Animal Control Minutes for August 8th.
Motion to receive all of these?
Motion to receive, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Petitions. Seventeen is a renewal for 267 Southampton Road for Plant-Based Foods.
Motion to grant the renewal if all fees and taxes are paid?
Second.
Motion is to grant it based on taxes. Everything is current. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eighteen is a petition for a zone change from R1A to RM20 at 15 Holy Family Road.
Motion to receive and refer to ordinance?
Second.
Motion to refer to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? President's Report. We did the DOR, DLS update. With regards to this room, you'll see boxes and new wiring going around. Scott Mack informed me he is a little behind on getting everything updated. They have been installing stuff. There's a little issue with Comcast coming in to move their wires and help him along. So we're waiting on that. So he is...
What's the issue?
What was that?
You said there's an issue with Comcast?
In the sense of coming in to remove and move the wiring so they can finish what they have to do. So...
I'll check on that.
Yep. And then he said, once that's done, he'll be back on track of updating the room. But he did apologize. He's trying to keep it on schedule, but it's wiring. Finally, got a notice and an email from Kip Foley, as well as our assistant here, Ryan. The CPA, one of our appointments, their timeframe is up. So we're going to have to post or reappoint the person. Kip did email me saying that he's enjoying his time there. He's helping out and doing the best he can. He would like to be reappointed to the term. So I know this is our first time with the CPA. And we did our, I think, what did we have? Appointments? One's coming off, so we have to figure out whether reappoint the same person or advertise again. But we'll have to have an order filed to do that. But I'm just giving you the update as to what came in as a communication.
When does the term expire?
Yeah, I think he was the one with the one-year term. There was a three, a two, and a one. So they stagger off. And I think he was the one-year term, so he's off now.
So his term has expired?
Well, his term has expired and he stays on until another is appointed or he is reappointed. So he's serving until someone goes in. Anyone have a question? Counselor Bartley?
Okay, so he would be available for reappointment for...
It'd be another one-year term. He fits... He's in the one-year term. I think it's... Eileen Plute is in the three-year term. I forgot who was in the two-year... Drawing a blank on the two-year term, but Mr. Foley was the one-year term.
So we have... The city council had four appointees, correct?
I thought it was three, but it could be four.
Yeah. Oh, well, maybe it's Counselor Sullivan, the fourth?
We have three, and then we have Counselor Sullivan.
Three, okay, Counselor Sullivan.
I'll turn it over to our expert.
All right, very good.
Counselor Sullivan, who serves?
I believe we have three. And I think the way it's staggered is one's a one-year, two-year, and a three-year. So that... But reappointing Kip now would be a three-year appointment. Then the two-year person would be up next year, and the three-year...
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. So otherwise, it'd be one, one, one forever.
So should we do a late file for Kip, or...
There wasn't a time rush. It was just a communication saying that it's coming up. Since it's new, there was really no process for it. So I said, we'll file an order for the next meeting to then green up.
Meaning, the president will file the order?
Yeah, I'll file an order.
Okay.
I just wanted to give you the update.
Thank you.
Seeing how it came in. Anyone else? Those are all my reports. Anyone else have anything to update, or no? Just... Oh, Counselor Sullivan?
I just want to make an announcement that on November 29th, I'll be hosting an event at Open Square from 3:00 to 7:00 in the afternoon. And the purpose of this event will be to help educate and inform the public on the challenges of our aging infrastructure, historic and cultural preservation opportunities, and the remediation challenges we face on all fronts. We're going to have some static displays, like a desktop... Desktop, a tabletop kind of format with some educational stuff on asbestos abatement, bricks and mortar type issues, some stuff on the Whiting Reservoir, some other topics, demolition by neglect and theft blight and drug challenges in a lot of the buildings, the older structures around Hoyoke. And also, there'll be an opportunity to view a working 100-year-old water turbine in operation. So, you know, just want to get the word out to the public. And there'll be something in the paper and encourage not only the other council members, but anybody on redevelopment or any other committees that would like to get some insight and stuff you don't normally get to see.
Counselor Valentin?
I think Peter had his hand up first.
Yeah, I just wanted to state that many of us got the notice about the Veterans Day event.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, at the high school this year on Saturday.
Saturday.
Yeah, at the high school at 10:00. But they'll have a helicopter drop, I think, land at, I think it's McKenzie Field at 9:00 a.m. And then they have the award. I know, Todd, we talked about that last week, about the change. They do have the, I think, three people, the award winners, who are listed, too. You know?
Yeah, I reached out to Jesus Pereira, and he didn't know the process. So we were able to get it in time to
Get the...
do that. And there will be one correction. I think it says "public servant." He wrote that up, and he meant "public safety," so we'll add that. So we'll get those citations or proclamations out to him as well. Of which he was very appreciative to help him out.
I'm glad he let us know it was Saturday, or I would have been showing up on...
And a lot of people, like I said, we usually have the War Memorial on the day.
On the day, yeah.
I think with the Sunday being a Sunday, they changed it to the high school, too. So a lot of the veterans and legions, you know, some of them actually sent out notices, say, to meet down at the War Memorial. So hopefully, they'll all get the word out that it's at the high school this year.
That's what I was going to announce. Okay.
All right. With that, on to reports of committee ordinance, 19A. Committee on Ordinance referred an order, amend Chapter 86. Oh, wait, actually. All right, so all ordinance, as of right now, seeing how we don't have enough signatures. We're waiting on Counselor Anderson Burgos. Like I said, he was tied up at work. Because that's not... His normal is to take the Tuesday off to be here. And seeing how we moved to Wednesday, he got tied up with the schedule.
Just defer them till later in the meeting?
All right, so the motion would be to proceed out of order and go to 20, which would be Finance, and take up Finance first. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 20A, Committee on Finance referred an order that the sum of $550,000 is appropriated to pay cost to purchase the Pulea Pool construction. So it's a bond.
Motion to take off the table and pass the first reading?
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, and we unanimously voted to recommend that we add this to a previous bond pass for the purpose of both renovating and, more important, repairing and reopening Pulea Pool. Quickly, we had a good, healthy discussion, some historical discussion about pools in Hoyoke and the history of not just the Pulea Pool, but it's our last pool in terms of summer, unless you count the indoor pool at the high school, which is utilized, in terms of our summer needs and meeting our population's needs for places to be able to swim during the summer. When it was last open on a fairly regular basis, we were looking at an average of, on good days, 250 people utilizing the pool. On social days, at least 150. As time... That was back in 2014 into 2015. It was eventually shut down in 2015 because repairs just couldn't be made and to a point where the pool would remain safe and be able to keep it open to the public. I think most of us know the story since then, encouraging and debating and fighting to get the pool open. We did pass a bond. And I do have the specs and everything here for anybody who wants to see them afterwards or whenever. But we did pass a bond, and we put a budget for $1.5 million, which was to include a lot of the repairs, a lot of the development and the preparation for the repairs for the pool itself. We were counting on a grant. I believe the name of the grant was PARC. It's a timely grant. And because the project was behind schedule, the city withdrew from the grant and could not meet the deadline of July 1st of this year. We have reapplied. The city has reapplied for the grant. And I guess sometime after December, we'll know if we will be receiving monies from the grant. In the meantime, the superintendent was with us from DPW, who was in charge of the facility and the pools. Terry Shepherd was with us from the Parks and Rec, who was in charge of the employment and the operations of the pools, the pool itself. They told us that the additional $550,000 being requested would allow the planning and the repairs to go forward with the hope that in December or when we do actually get the grant, if we do get the grant, we can reduce the bond. There are some contingency and some cost overruns because we're going into a new construction period. The contingency within the request, both the original and now with the additional $550,000, is 8%. We're looking at needing $1.7 to $1.8 million, depending on how the bids come in to do the project. Quick reminder of the project. It includes a new look, a new look in terms of an entrance, a new pad, which is, you know, the... Around the pool, which is utilized by people who are swimming when they're not in the water. And of course, some redoing of the fence and redoing of a number of things of the clubhouse itself. The committee listened to the arguments. We believe it's good money. I think, and I hope it goes without saying, that this city, our kids, our families, especially our young families and adults, you know, deserve a pool. And when I grew up and when Counselor Sullivan, who was older than me, and Counselor Tomlin, who is only a year younger than me, grew up, you know, we used to count five pools. You know, there was Ward 4, there was Lyman Street, there was the Jackson Parkway Pool over on what was South Street, which is totally differently configured with 391. There was another pool down in South Hoyoke. And the state had a pool known as Shamora, which was absolutely the premier of the, I think, of all the state pools. The state asked to close that pool. They took over Pulea Pool. We opened the pool in Pulaski over here. Pulaski didn't work out. The state asked us to take over Pulea Pool. We do not have a state pool. A community of our size, we're one of the few cities that don't have a state pool. But we believe that this is important to our young families and our children.
Yeah, I'll be extremely briefer. The City of Hoyoke needs a pool for the kids. One of the things that we do well, I think, is we put up spray parks. And spray parks have been officials to all the children. But we do need a pool. These kids and parents and any person that just wants to go down and just relax, we certainly need a pool. So I think this is money, bond, very well spent. Thank you.
Thanks. I just want to be sure that if we do approve this, it won't jeopardize the reapplication for the grant because the funding's already in place? Is it correct that it will not jeopardize that?
That's a good question. It wasn't asked exactly that way in the committee meeting. But what I heard from the superintendent is... We've already reapplied, or, you know, we put the application in. But what I heard from the superintendent that we have... It won't jeopardize it because we have a good chance of getting the grant again. It was only because we couldn't meet the deadline.
Okay, thank you.
Name was? Yeah, just a couple other points. Counselor Sullivan brought up some good stuff because he's in our CPA. You could also tie CPA money, CDBG money towards this to help offset the bonding even more. So the issue with the grant, when it first came in, was we had to have full funding to then accept the grant, to then back out the grant. It's going to be the same thing if the grant is approved. So if that comes through, and then if Counselor Sullivan can work his magic in CPA and CDBG, that even further drives down what we really have to use for bonding. But it's like anything else. You got a full bond to then back out of it. Counselor Leahy?
Just a quick question on that, because I totally agree. And Counselor Sullivan said so many great things during that meeting, and I agree with all of them. Do we get the minutes of the CPA?
I have not received those, no.
Because I'd like to know what's going on during those meetings. I think it'd be... They should be sent to us automatically, shouldn't they? Okay, thank you.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, also, in this funding request, there's quite a bit in there for demolition, which... There's some stuff there that Mike indicated our own city team may be able to take on to further reduce costs. But to Counselor McGivern's point, we have to get the full amount, you know, agreed upon and funded. And we don't have to borrow that amount, but we do have to get it in place. But there's a significant opportunity for savings on that end as well.
I'm just looking at the bond language. That any material change to the project, including this bond, shall be subject to city council approval. So we have the Bartley Amendment. Counselor McGivern? Counselor McGivern?
We did talk about the Bartley Amendment in the Finance Committee. Um, yeah, and I, I just think these are all good questions and just to, just a reminder or somehow maybe to appease everybody's worries is, our city treasurer, but even more important, our financial advisor, Kendra, is, is very adept in understanding when a bond is actually, is floated. The rates are still low. They will not go out for, for the full, this is a max number here. They will not go out for the full bond until they know all the, and if you read the language of any bond language that comes in, till they know all the receipts that the city gets. They, they know cities, municipalities are looking for additional funds to help offset what they have to borrow and they, they will wait to the very last minute before they utilize the, the full amount of the max of the bond that is, that is approved. We can't wait, you know, in order to have these projects go forward, the state requires us to have the fund, full funding, up to the full funding in place, but we can reduce it anytime.
All right, so the motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the 550 bond.
Valentin?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
President? Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the bond.
Mr. President, if I could ask to suspend the rules to take up 20B, 20C, 20D and 20E as a package, we could use, there are each grants that are coming in, none of, none of them have matching, matching components. If we do it as one vote, I think we can do it, but we can also separate if there's any questions or concerns.
All right, so motion is to suspend rules, take up B, C, D and E as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? 20B is the opioid program grant. 20C is the end abuse and later life grant. 20D is the Brian Memorial Justice Assistant Grant. And 20E is the reentry grant. Motion is to receive, adopt and pass the first reading. Counselor McGivern?
Please.
Under discussion?
Yes, if I could, very quickly, on the opioid grant, no match, total is $498,025. This is a, a state grant that is, comes from federal dollars. The federal government likes to funnel a lot of these grants through the state to us, to municipalities. The committee highly recommends this after listening to Sergeant Hart from the Police Department. Sergeant Hart does a lot of the grants for the Police Department and he, he told us the, not only is this going to be utilized in terms of training, in terms of allowing a better understanding of what the crisis is within the city, but more important, an edge towards getting towards recovery, getting towards what we can do to help people who have addictions within the city itself. One of the key words I heard from Sergeant Hart was the training and, and the, the placement of recovery coaches. Recovery coaches, nothing new, but it is something relatively new, I should say, in terms of rehabilitation for people who are addicted to substance. Recovery coaches, you know, methods have become very successful and you see more and more BHNs starting to move towards that type of, that type of treatment. We feel that it's, it's good money, there's no match. We, we trust the Police Department that they're going to put this to, to, to good use and we hope that the, you know, that the city council would agree to accept this grant for 500 and, well, almost 500,000. If there's no questions, I'll go on to the Byrne Memorial Justice.
Yes, please.
This is an ongoing grant, 35,101. We, we use this grant for a number of different things every year. This year, we're looking at purchasing of video equipment. They do have five-year warranties, that was asked at the meeting, for a total of about $15,000. There's also some new, $20,000 for dirty tasers, which would be, I think we understand the importance of a taser for our police officers out in the, out in the streets. That would be the, the grant for this year. If there's no questions, I'll go on to the next grant?
Yes.
Okay, the next grant is $25,000. Nope, that was the Byrne, I'm sorry. You know, we gotta get these things in order from the Finance Committee to the full agenda, you know, you know, because it just crosses up the, the chair of finance all the time.
Keep your on your toes.
All right. The Western, uh, not Western Mass, but the reentry grant establishes a fund, it's nine, well, let's do that one last, I'm sorry, let's do the, the end abuse later, later in life grant, the 398,205. This, this is new and, and this, I think, is, is some money that will be well spent in an area that I think we can all agree upon. Sergeant Hart says in conjunction with Western Mass Elder Cares, the Women's Shelter for Campaneras, that there'll be, this is a three-year grant, that they are going to be doing some training and then putting some outreach people that will be able to work with our elderly population in terms of abuse, in terms of elderly abuse especially, in terms of being able to get people into, out of the situation and into a situation where they can get help. The, the total amount of the grant is 398,205. The Police Department will keep the statistics as they work with both of those, both of those entities and, and I think it's money that'll be well spent, especially once the training is done and people are, are equipped to be able to identify elderly abuse and how to, how to address it. If there's no question, we'll go on to the last grant. Last grant, we did a lot of, we spent more time on and, and for a good reason, but we do believe it's, it's an excellent grant, but we, we do note that we want the Police Department and the auditor to be careful of, of these type of grants. This grant is a whopping $959,057. It is another federal grant that's coming in. This grant is something that the Police Department is the, the lead, I'm not going to say the lead agency, but the lead overseer of the grant itself. The lead agencies that are going to be part of this grant include our new sheriff, the Sheriff's Department, the DA's office and ROKA. ROKA is an agency that has been in Springfield, has been in Western Mass for some time now and more recently it has made its niche into the city of Hoyok and they're doing a, a lot of work, visible work. In the last three weeks, you could see their crews outside both this building and the building next door doing a fall cleanup. They helped out at Heritage State Park and they've done a number of different types of programs with the DPW in our alleyways. ROKA is, is not about doing community service work, it's about taking at-risk youth, high-at-risk youth and who are coming out of an incarceration period and who need, they need something to grasp into, something not just to keep them busy in terms of doing work, but something where they can be, they can be retrained, they can be reconditioned in terms of the way that they, they act in, in society itself. And ROKA is geared to do and, and a number of different things, including, you know, helping them get their high sets, helping them get a skill, helping them and work out, you know, why they at one time turn to, to some type of a life of crime. This money, and the reason we spent a lot of time on this too though is because we're dependent upon the agencies, you know, to use this money correctly. And I, I've asked this in the past with the auditor and I've asked this with the Police Department is, you know, how much of a thumbprint do you have on the money once it goes to, to, to a program? And Sergeant Hart said that they will be getting both weekly, but more important, monthly statistics on how the money is used. They learned in the past that they have to do audits of, of people who are being said, are receiving the benefits of this grant, not, not the salaries, but the, the young individuals who are being either paid or who are, you know, part of the program itself. And the auditor agreed that, you know, they have to keep a better look at the dispersment of the grant itself. Despite, I, I, I think, you know, cities should not be the goal between for this type of money, but this type of money is very important and I think for now, we have to accept the mandate from the federal government who wants to give us the $1 million through the state, through the Police Department.
Any questions on those grants? Counselor Sullivan?
Just to kind of, one of the things that, you know, it's hard to turn away free money, but the Hoyok Police Department did all the work to get this, we're administering it and in effect supervising programs that are benefiting city, other cities, citizens in Chicopee, West Springfield, all, all around us. The amount that we get towards administering that and the work that went into getting said grant is only $30,000 on a nearly $1 million grant. And, well, I'm not going to vote against accepting this kind of money regardless of where it goes, it's a good program. I feel we should be getting a larger share if we're the only city that is going to bear the burden of administering this grant and we're the one that's getting it and, and all these other cities are benefiting from it as well.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I, I really appreciate being at that meeting. It was, it was, I, I, it was so informative and I'm just glad I, I'm glad I was able to attend. One of the things I, I think we, we should be aware of is that some of these grant funds are going to offset salaries for HPD. I, I don't, we don't, we didn't drill down to see how much the offset is, but that's, I think, vital information that we should have forwarded to us. Sergeant Hart, um, um, he did a great job, he was well-prepared. I'm still waiting for his, his emails to come forward to us that we requested. I know it's only been a week, but it's, it's nevertheless, we, we requested the information and I think we're going to use that to, hopefully it'll come in handy next year when we, when we look at that, that police budget. As for this, as for these grants, the, I mean, I, I'm grateful, I'm grateful that we've got so many organizations that are, that are willing to, to invest in Hoyok for, for, for free, basically. I just hope that the entities that use those funds can at least come back to us at, on some point in time to let us know what turned around with 978,900, $398,000, $498,000. I mean, we're, we're almost at 2 million, right, right there in a stroke of a pen. And I, I, you know, realize from these meetings that we were able to call out the answers, a lot of this is for training, a lot of this is for, for transportation down to DC, we know that, but we've, we've got to get, we've got to get our arms around some of these intractable problems with drugs and other items that are, that are just plaguing this municipality. And I'm hopeful that we'll, we'll, we'll get some positive feedback from the entities. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else? Counselor McGivern?
Thank Counselor Bartley for attending the meeting and for reminding us of that $30,000 and likewise, I missed or didn't say, in the elder grant, the, the, there will be a, a salary for an elderly officer from the HPD, at least two years of the salary will be paid. And David makes a good point, you know, this is what we should be hearing at budget time when we, we see all these salaries in the budget and yet we find out that some of the sources of revenue are not directly from the, the tax revenue itself.
I do, everyone did receive the email from Officer Hart with regards to the reentry grant?
I got an email.
I got it.
He sent it to Ryan, Ryan sent it out. And I do believe in that-
Yeah, that night, I think, Todd.
In the, in the meeting, he did say, because I asked the questions about matching as well as liability to the city, if we don't correctly track that grant, you know, could we be liable for the payments to the other area? And he said, well, it's 70 pages, Counselor. I did read it to my kids and helped put them to sleep. Just kidding. It, it is lengthy, but on page 12, it talks about a matching fund of 50%, which could be in kind. We never got an answer to how they're, they're doing that portion. I'd like an answer to that as well as the liability. It does say it won't pay if it's not tracked correctly, but whether or not the city would have to pick up the pay, that was really unclear. I don't think we would, but that wasn't really addressed. To me, I'll vote for these, but I'm just going to throw that as a cautionary measure. When these grants come in, we should get the whole package. Why we're only getting the cover page nowadays, that just says we're getting 900,000, that sounds great, 70 pages of details is what we're voting on. We should be getting that upfront. That's my point. Further discussion? Motion is to pass the first reading on all of them, Counselor, B, C, D and E?
If there's no objection.
Motion is to pass the first reading on 20B, C, D and E. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for all of the grants.
Valentin?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the grants.
Motion to return to the regular order?
Motion is to go back to ordinance. 19A, Committee on Ordinance, who was referred to amend Chapter 86 to move the handicap spot located at Oak Street to a location approximately 20 feet further south of Dwight Street. And it's been signed off by Bacon, Bartley and Anderson Burgos.
Yeah, yeah, motion to, I, I, I was chairing that meeting that night, Mr. President.
All right, so motion is to receive and adopt.
Yeah, motion to receive and adopt.
Under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
Pretty straightforward.
All right, so moving to sign, if there were discussion, motion to receive and adopt and to pass the first reading, correct?
Motion to pass first reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to pass second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
The order be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the moving of the sign.
Valentin?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the moving of the sign. 19B, the Committee on Ordinance, who was referred in order that DPW change the yield sign from Westfield Road to Homestead to a stop sign. Motion that, recommend that the council adopt the recommendations of DPW.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report.
Motion is to receive and adopt the committee report. Under discussion, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, Bob Parent came in and he, he's following in Mike's footsteps. He comes up with a pretty thorough summary that, that he presents to us. For, for this, the DPW inspected the intersection. He confirmed, confirmed that there's a sight distance issue when turning right from the eastbound lane to Westfield Road to head southbound on Homestead. He felt that there was some ornamental grasses in, in the, in the traffic island, the DPW is going to trim those grasses before the winter and then going forward find alternative plantings. The engineer felt at this point, it's best just to leave the yield sign and not have a stop sign. They, they felt that that was for, for traffic safety purposes first. If something has to be changed on the road, he said he would review it.
Anyone else? Counselor Bacon?
Thanks. I would just note that those grasses were trimmed, so the sight issue has improved at that area. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Counselor Bacon.
Anyone else?
Thank you, DPW.
Motion is to receive and adopt the recommendations of the DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. President, can we suspend and take 19C and 19D as a package, please? They're kind of the same thing.
Suspend the rules, take up 19C and D. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? 19C, Committee on Ordinance, who was referred in order that residents reside at 179 High Street be given permanent parking, resident parking actually, that be leave to withdraw. And then D, Committee on Ordinance, who was referred in order that resident parking only signs be placed in front of 340 Hampden Street and that one is also to be given leave to withdraw.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report.
Motion is to receive, adopt the committee report. Under discussion, Counselor Bartley?
We had a very good discussion on these, these very similar orders. We, we felt that, that though they, they had merit on, on the 179 High Street, I, I think we had a, a very good discussion. That's just over here and we, we went back to the, went back to the, to the, to the parking garage and, and we're still waiting to get some feedback from this ad hoc parking committee. And then I, I, by the way, advised the ordinance committee that night that, that, and this is an unimpeachable source advised me of this, that the city, so beyond reproach, the city of Hoyok stopped ticketing cars for a three-month period because the city of Hoyok ran out of parking tickets. Virtually impossible to do, but somehow we, we broke the mold and did it. No more parking tickets. We had none to, we had none to levy for a three-month period. We've had chief executives sitting here in that chair say to us point blank, we are going to get revenue, counselors, from your ordinance changes that you had to increase the fines. Where's that gone? We're going to get revenue from the parking decks. Where's that gone? We're going to get an ad hoc committee going to get this cranking. Where's that gone? Puff. Oh, Counselor Bartley, you're so mean. I'm just stating historical facts, maybe with a little bit of emphasis, maybe it's overkill, but nevertheless, these are historical facts. We pass budgets based upon recommendations and of the mayor that do not occur. You can vote the way you want, but it's happened time and again. At any rate, for these two places here, we felt as so, there's, there's metered parking. To take away, to take away metered parking spaces is unreasonable at 179 High. To go to resident-only or parking across from established businesses on, on Dwight, we, we felt that they, the committee felt the majority of, was unanimous, felt that it was unreasonable. We have either the highest or second highest commercial tax rate in the Commonwealth. These are, these are commercial tax, taxpaying entities. I've been advised by the assessor in knowing certain terms that, that our tax rates will go up when we get the matrix, they, they will go up for, for, for residential and, and commercial most likely, to, just to balance the budget that we have. So I, I hope we all received and reviewed the materials that the assessor sent, I'm sure we did. And despite the, despite the, the, the raising of the tax levy ceiling, we're, we're going to have, we're going to have an increased tax rate. So we already have the highest commercial rate. The committee felt and we had some other counselors in, in the meeting that night that, that really we should advise, advise the, the proponent that, that this is not the best source. Plus, one more thing, over on Dwight Street, Mr. President, we did note that there are, there is one, Joe will have to tell me the address, there's one parcel that we just declared surplus and, and there's a potential there for a, whether it's RFP or an auction, for the apartment owner to maybe procure that and use that for parking. So, and that, for off-street parking, for, for his, his or her, I don't know if it's a he or she, his or her property. So there, there are, are other potential avenues. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Aye.
All those opposed? Back to finance. We did up to F. Committee on Finance was referred in order that five thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-two cents be authorized for the legal department litigation.
Make a motion to, or receive, pass the first reading?
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass first reading. Under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Real quick, there was a number of arbitrations that took place within the fire department, but the largest one and the one that stands out the most, I think we're all aware of, was with the demotion of Lieutenant Cunningham from lieutenant back to firefighter. The arbitrator ruled in favor of Lieutenant Cunningham's grievance, that he should not have been devoted. The city is obligated to pay both the back wages, which is another item coming on down from the committee in a minute, but the city and the union in all arbitration costs split the cost of the arbitrator. The arbitrator for this particular bill is Mary Ellen Shea. Our share of the bill itself is the five thousand six three three fifty-two cents, and there's a two hundred and seventy-five dollars to be authorized from litigation appropriation in two thousand nineteen to pay the full amount. It's cut and dry as far as the arbitration goes. Our say in any time in these situations are we always have a say as to not the bill being paid, but where the money's coming from. And I think the request this evening is fair. It's coming from the city solicitor's department's litigation account.
Anyone else? Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion would be to pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Valentin?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfer.
Mr. President, we suspend the rules to take twenty G, twenty J, and twenty K as a package.
Motion to suspend the rule, take G, J, and K as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? G is from firefighters, eleven thousand two forty-five oh seven, to then pay deputy chiefs, captains, lieutenants. J is from alarm officers, one thousand ninety-seven forty-six, to pay supervisor alarms and assistant. And then K is from firefighters, seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents for deputy chiefs. Motion is that they be adopted. So, motion would be receive, adopt, pass.
Make a motion to pass, yes.
Under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a long discussion with the fire department at the finance committee meeting on a number of things. We had, our auditor was present, and we believe we've got the answers we've been seeking for probably the past month and a half as to what exactly is going on and why so much money is coming out of the firefighters line item itself. Begin with, these transfers, all three of them, go back to an issue, an era that took place as early as July first of two thousand fifteen. Contracts were awarded back then, contracts were implemented for that fiscal year, and in implementing them, a mistake was made in certain parts of the increases to the firefighters and to the alarm, some of the alarm dispatchers themselves. This was a very complicated era payroll, era to identify. When the firefighters first identified it between the deputy chiefs and the firefighters and the alarm operators, they were not getting too far with the city in terms of asking for back pay and for back wages that they were due. And the city, quite frankly, it wasn't that they were against it. Once they realized the error did take place, they just needed to do the work to figure out exactly who got what money and what the error was. This, that took place over a period of time. I commend the, I forget her title, but Dale is, I call her the business manager, payroll coordinator for the fire department, who's been with them for decades, does a tremendous jobs in terms of being able to answer questions, especially when it comes to payroll, especially when it comes to the budget. The auditor's office, again, was with us. They admitted that the error did take place, and this, essentially, these three transfers will be the back pay all to different officers and firefighters that have the, because of the error, have the monies coming. It is not the current contract or contract that we saw at the end of last year in front of us. This is the prior contract that we are dealing with. The committee felt confident, both, I think, especially with Dale, but with the response from everyone that, you know, that this error did take place and that the correct solution is before us. So, here comes the question that we asked, and we probably spent a lot of time on, is why is there so much money in the firefighter's account for this fiscal year to handle this? We learned from Bellamy, from our auditor, that near the end of last fiscal year, I remind you, we were going through a lot of things, including a firefighter's contract in front of us, deputy chief's contract in front of us, but no appropriation in front of us in ending the fiscal year, as always, beginning the fiscal year. And the auditor told us that when the fire department came to him, and when he agreed that the error did take place, he estimated that there was a seventy thousand dollar need, up to seventy thousand dollar need, to correct that error. He encumbered the seventy thousand dollars in claims, not claims, but told us, reports, that he put it in the firefighter's contract. Counselor McGee, myself, I think everybody at the meeting, immediately said, why weren't we told that in the budget hearings? And Bellamy did apologize and said it was his mistake, and he did, you know, he did, you know, feel confident, though, that this amount, and this is what we spent most of the night, making sure that the amount that's being transferred is part of that seventy thousand dollars, give or take a couple thousand. And at this point, the money is owed, we're confident about that. The auditor is owned up to the seventy thousand dollars. We set our piece as to transparency, and we've told every auditor, we've confirmed we did not appoint Bellamy because we're in the process of appointing a permanent one. I think everybody knows that history, but any interview we've gone through, you've heard me and other city counselors ask the interviewees, you know, how are you going to handle situations when either the mayor's office or other officer departments are, you know, exactly coming with a hundred percent transparent answer to the city council? And the most important thing we need is an auditor that gives us the hundred percent transparency. I'm not saying or shiding Bellamy at this point, but I'm just saying, this is history. We, I accept the apology, and it's, I feel it's time to move on in this one. But the money is owed, and that's why the money's coming from these three line items. The alarm division, there's some extra because of a position that wasn't filled for part of the year, there's some extra money in it. The committee recommends that we pass this and correct the error.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, Counselor McGivern, Joe did a great job summarizing that. And basically, what it came down to was, we had some great people with us, Bellamy did a great job. It was a decimal point, missing a decimal point is what created this. So, having sat through the whole meeting and asking a lot of good questions, I agree with Joe. I'm going to vote for this. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I'll just make one clarification. Within that meeting, there was a finger pointing that the reason for the error was Brian Smith's calculation. I did reach out to Brian Smith, and that is a falsity.
Good to know, because I asked that question.
So, we will not allow people to blame others for their mistakes. Also, within that meeting, a few things were not really revealed correctly, and upon reviewing those facts, the fire department informed us, and rightfully so. This was a calculation mistake based on an old contract, and it's a mistake, it's got to be paid. They, instead of going to court and suing and causing fees, they brought it right to the attention and tried to fix it, and Legal was great in jumping in, helping out. The issue is, when budget time came, they knew it. They knew absolutely about it. Bellamy tried to dance around it and say, I didn't know until after June, when you guys wanted recess. That in and of itself is where the falsity happens. In the budget process, you knew about it in April, May, which is what the fire department disclosed to us, and even if you said you didn't know about it until after, how did you add it to the budget after we voted on it? You gotta stop. This is about transparency. You knew there was a problem. We took a different stance for the budget cycle this year. We invited every single department head in, had several long meetings. Everyone did their best on getting here and staying very late. To not be told that, and we specifically asked, where can we cut in the budget? Where can we try and do to make things better? It was hidden. There's no two ways about it. That's where the problem lies. Yes, this should be approved tonight because it is owed, it was a contractual mistake and a sense of a math problem. But they hid it, and that is the truth. And I will not allow them to blame Brian Smith for this action. Any further discussion? If none, Counselor Bartley?
Well, first of all, I commend the president for contacting Brian, because his name was said that night. So, I appreciate that. I think, I think that the blame shouldn't be completely pointed at the acting auditor either.
No.
I mean, there's an employee above the acting auditor who knew about it as well. So, I mean, it's, 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 again, so there was, I mean, if I hadn't been at that meeting, there's no way you can understand this stuff, unless you're at the meeting, hear the whole discussion, unless you watch the tape, you know, we, or watch the tape, or watch it live on TV. So, I'm very grateful that was here. I really compliment the chair as well, but the mayor knew about this as well, Mr. President. So, if we're gonna, if we're gonna lay the blame somewhere, you lay it at the feet of the mayor, who, again, did not tell us. So, the auditor doesn't do this in a vacuum, he does it with the mayor's knowledge. He took money off books, and he comes in here and says, hey, guys, you know, it's not costing us any money, we got the money right here. You never told us, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Acting Auditor, you never said a word. Therein lies the rub. Thank you.
Motion?
Just real quick, Mr. President, thank you everybody for your comments. I meant to point out, but our new sheriff was in town also. Our new auditor has started work. Tanya was with us for the entire meeting. She took in a lot, and I was grateful for that because I think she got a flavor of the questions that were asked her in the interview as she's learning her new job. We were nice to her, as Counselor Tolman said, you know, we went easy for the first meeting, but it was good to see her present and look forward to working with her.
So, the motion, if there's no further discussion, is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for twenty G, J, and K.
Valentin?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. Twenty H, Committee on Finance, who was referred in order that they hereby be appropriated four thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-two cents, and it's going from plumbing inspector inspections, plumbing gas, to sickly buyback, vacation buyback.
Make a motion to receive, pass the first reading?
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass first reading. Under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
President, real quick, last couple of meetings, we've talked about the fact that we've had a plumbing inspector leave the city of Holyoke and an electoral inspector leave the city of Holyoke. Damien Cody told me that the monies here are monies to the sickly buyback and vacation buyback respectfully for the employees that they have coming back to them. That's a payroll thing. He signed off on the money and payroll agrees to the amounts themselves.
Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Valentin?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfer.
Yes, a different agenda.
Nineteen and some, one and the other. There was an updated one.
In your desk? I put it in your desk.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. I didn't think you were coming, so I put you and Danny.
All right, so we, it is twenty, it's a new agenda. With that, Ron.
Wayne Counselor Leahy.
The whole entire trip, I'm like, why does he keep saying that it's twenty?
Like twenty, twenty's my favorite number.
I'm like, wow, I know it's worked a long day.
Don't feel bad. I spent a half hour before the meeting making notes on the first agenda, realizing I had to go change the notes to the new agenda, so I got the right numbers.
All right, so we are on twenty I. So, that is fourteen thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and three cents from firefighters to lieutenants.
Motion to receive, pass the first reading?
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass first reading. Under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Real quick, Mr. President, I stated that the bill we passed, prior bill we passed, item twenty F, was for the arbitrator, Mary Ellen Shea. One of the big arbitrations that she oversaw was the Lieutenant Cunningham. Most of us, I think we know the history of the demotion and the arbitration, the grievance being run through, for Lieutenant Cunningham through the arbitration, and this is his back pay, fourteen thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and three cents, that would have been his lieutenant's salary during a period of time when he was demoted to a firefighter position. We, again, cannot weigh in on arbitration, union matters, grievances, things of that nature, but we do have a say as to where the money comes from. This is part of that deal that we've been talking about with the seventy thousand dollars that is in the firefighter's account that Bellamy had placed there because of the error in the contracts, and it works out to where it can be used for Lieutenant Cunningham's back pay as a lieutenant.
Anyone else? There's no further discussion. Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Valentin?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. Twenty L, Committee on Finance, who was referred in order that they hereby be appropriated twenty-three thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars from firefighters to deputy chiefs. Recommend that be adopted.
Make a motion to receive, pass the first reading?
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass first reading. Under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. Another surprise to, I think, all of us. We adopted earlier this year, we received in June, a agreement that was negotiated and signed to by the city and the deputy chiefs themselves for contractual raise. We, I think we all felt after reading the contract that it was both a fair contract and a contract that recognized the, a reasonable cost of living increase for these positions. At the time, the, it would have been early, probably would have been our August meeting, we received the appropriation, which we thought would cover the entire fiscal year for the contract. I even asked a question that evening as to, because the amount was only some eleven thousand something. I asked a question that evening as to, was this covering the entire first year of the contract? And there was no one that said it was not. Both our auditor was present, the city solicitor, and I think it was, it was an honest, not I asked a question that evening as to, was this the, covering the entire first year of the contract? And there was no one that said it was not. Both our auditor was present, the city solicitor. And, and I think it was, it was an honest, not a mistake, but an honest no answer. The, the 11,000 covered the increase that took place on July 1st. This covers the increase that takes place for the same contract on January 1st. The money, I don't think, is the issue, but the problem, again, is the transparency of knowing what we're voting on. Because what we vote on is appropriations, both the amount of the appropriation, but also the source of the appropriation. And that's, to me, is a key. And, and again, I was happy that our new auditor was with us, and I'm not pointing fingers, but I'm just saying, our new auditor was with us, and I think she got a flavor for what the city council needs are, are in terms of transparency and in terms of working together. But this is the additional amount for the deputy chief's contract. If, if I remember correctly, it was a one, a 1.5%, and then something else in the, the third year.
Anyone else? Motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion would be to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Valentin?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. Committee on Finance was referred in order that they hereby be appropriated $12,528 as follows. $5,151 from head clerk, $7,107 from assistant director, two, and there's several different accountings, assistant auditor, 1,400, so on and so forth, which then adds up to the 12,528.
Motion received, pass the first reading?
Motion is to pass, receive, adopt, pass first reading, under discussion, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. We learned that this transfer is in response to the ordinance that the city council adopted earlier this year, which would be the 3% increase to certain individuals in terms of salaries, salary increases that are not received for a number of different reasons. As, as I think we can note, a lot of this, these, or I believe all of these are non-union, but I'm not too sure. We didn't go over one by one, and I apologize for that. But the, this was a 3% increase for these, for these individual positions.
Anyone else? I have one question, Counsel McGivern. It says Assistant to Fire Chief 2,446. Is that supposed to be assistants? There's two positions there. At 81,000?
We didn't ask that.
No, I, I know.
And Dale did say thank you before she left in the evening. And I realized after she left, I, I saw the, I didn't see the amount until after the, the fire department people had left. But there are two. I think we know the two people and the history of two people being in this position.
I, just the, the way it's written, I want to make sure it's going to both. I mean, the number comes out for both. I want to make sure it's said that way.
Right, and just the similar point under reference library, and I'm sure that's referring to more than one also.
Yeah. But I just want that on the record, that's all that it's going to.
Right, it did look like a large number.
It was, it was a long evening. I take the responsibility and apologize. No, no, I do, because usually these things, I would, I would have gone one by one to have better answers for everybody. But again, this was an ordinance that was passed earlier, it was a good ordinance. And I, you know, these are people, I, I can almost see names in almost every one of them. Some of them not receiving any type of increase for over 10 years or more.
Yeah, I just want to make sure they all get it correctly, that's all for that. Counsel Bacon.
So I just want to thank the council for supporting this order and getting these people a long overdue increase. And, Mr. President, as a point of information, do we know if free cash is certified yet?
It's not, sorry. It has not been certified yet. We learned that in finance as well.
I'd like, I was gonna wait till we've all around this to address that real quick, because I think we should.
I'm usually there, but I was on vacation.
All right, so we have an update coming. Counsel Leahy?
I was just gonna say, it's Counsel Bacon. I asked Bellamy that night if free cash has been certified, and he said it has not. And I asked if, what's the possibility of free cash coming back at zero? And he said 50/50. And as a city council for close to 20 years, I've never heard of free cash coming back at zero. And that would be awful.
So this is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Valentin?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. Before we move on, Counsel McGivern with an update.
Very, very quickly, a personal privilege, Mr. President, just on free cash, because I think it's important. A lot of these transfers, you know, we, we gave, got the answers and, and understand the transfers we made this evening. Please understand, we were told, there's enough money in the firefighter's account for the rest of the year. Not to cover a new contract, but to cover the existing contract, which is, as we know, expired. They are negotiating, but I think they understand even a new contract may not come to fruition to upcoming fiscal year. With that in mind, you know, Counsel McGee asked a question, a lot of us have heard the rumors. Counsel Leahy weighed in, asked his questions. And, and we got, what we've been hearing is there's a snag in free cash being certified by the state. That can mean a number of things. Sadly, we were only given one reason for it at the finance committee meeting. I, I, as Chair, cut the conversation a little bit short because I think we're, if we don't get an answer real quick from the state, I think we're gonna have to file an order and bring in some state people so we can ask our questions. One, the one reason that was given to us, and, and it's because it's a battle right now, is with, with everything that happened last year with the passing of the tax rate and not being able to get the fiscal, third fiscal quarter bill out, we, our third and fourth fiscal bill went out as one bill in the last quarter. Meaning no one had to pay that bill until the last three months of the fiscal year. Over a million dollars came in after July 1st of last year's tax bill. Not late, but they just came in after the 1st. At this point in time, our auditor led us to believe, our, our acting auditor led us to believe that there is a negotiation, negotiation with the state to allow that $1 million plus to be counted as the free cash calculations for last year, coming in, for this year, but coming in from last year. And that's part of the debate. There's no doubt in my mind, there's more to it than just that. And I know Counsel McGee has, has reminded us about the issues of the, the health, healthcare items in the budget itself. And we've had other issues that we've been told the past couple of years in terms of calculations and things that we've learned, things we've learned from the school department in terms of the way money is calculated in terms of net school spending and, and the things that we've done to try to rectify that. So if we don't hear real shortly, I'll file the order, or we can all file the order. I think we gotta bring some state people in to get answers.
File, late file, that would be an emergency. Thank you for the update. Other committees would be public safety, none, public service, none, DGNR, none, charter and rules, none, joint committee, none at this time. Orders, motion to orders and resolutions, 26 from Counsel Leahy, that the city of Hoyok invite in Alex Cora, who is manager of the Boston Red Sox, to speak to the Hoyok Public Schoolchildren. Cora led the Red Sox to some type of championship, the World Series. His history is impressive, so Counsel Leahy?
Yeah, due deference, this is coming from President McGee, who I love and respect, however, he is a Yankees fan. So please give the due diligence to our, our.
Ouch.
Our coach came in, I think he's what, one of five people that have ever come in in the first year and won the World Series. I think he's probably, I think it's either the first or second Hispanic person.
First?
First.
First Hispanic person. And the city of Hoyok, out of 351 cities and towns, we have a high population of Hispanic children. And the way he speaks, not only goes to Hispanic people, it goes to all people. He's just a very motivating, just a great person. And so, you know, people called and asked me if we could get him into the St. Patrick's Parade, but that's smack dab in the middle of spring training, so obviously that's not possible. So, you know, if we put a, a word out in the street, you know, if somebody at home, there's no press here, but if somebody tries to notify the Red Sox that the city of Hoyok would love to have him come in and speak to the children, and quite frankly, I would be there. I want to hear what he says. He's just a great guy. So having said that, Ryan, maybe send this to our administrative assistant and, and call up your contacts, the Red Sox, and get this going. Come on, Ryan.
We, we could, just on that, draft up a, a letter, send it on behalf of the city council. I mean, I'm, I'm probably not gonna sign, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. You guys are so tough tonight. Counsel McGivern.
Fantastic order, I'm all in favor of it. I was very impressed, you know, as a Red Sox fan, but watching a young manager, you know, you know, bring his team to the, not only, you know, to the World Series, but such a fantastic year. And, and when he was interviewed, while everybody's celebrating, champagne corks are flying, everybody's, you know, athletes are hopping around and all, enjoying the moment, one of the first things that came out of his mouth is he was gonna ask the owners to go with him and to bring the World Series trophy to the island. And I, I couldn't believe he thought so well of Ireland, and he was gonna bring the World.
I'm going next week, I can help him bring it.
I was, no, I was, in all seriousness, I was very impressed by that, that he wanted to bring the World Series to his home, to Puerto Rico, and, and with everything that's happened to Puerto Rico and, and still happening, I, I thought that was a, a very class act move. We, we've had the World Series trophies here in Hoyok on a number of occasions. And I think to bring, to allow him to bring them in is just as important as bringing the trophy and to show our, to show our students. I think it's a great idea.
Counsel Tomlin?
Yeah, just briefly, I was at a chamber event this morning with Counsel Barley up at the Soldiers Home, and I talked to Barry Feingold, and he actually brought this up to get the city to have him come here. And except, actually Barry was from Peru, come up here. And with the high Latino population in Hoyok, especially in the school system, probably about 80%, that I think would be a great thing for him to come here and to show that kids that, you know, what he can do, what you can do with your life, if you really strive for it. And, and the way he coached this year was just unbelievable, how he was just easygoing and not demeaning. He was like part of the, the, you know, really cohesive unit of the team. That's why they, they got where they're at. And Joe, I've been following the Red Sox since 1967. You're that year, right, when they beat, got beat by the St. Louis Cardinals?
Got beat by the St. Louis, Peter.
In seven games, and Bob Gibson, I think, won three games from that year. Yeah, so, but yeah, I think it'd be a great thing, and I'd be happy to, to sign on this, this order with you.
Would everyone like to sign on?
Yes.
So.
So, Mr. President, if you, if you want to put together a letter on behalf of everybody, I can, I, I do have contacts. My people can contact his people kind of thing. And it's, I'm not trying to be funny. Well, the, the hilarious part is I'm not a baseball fan at all, but I followed this just because it was Alex Cora and I'm very proud of, of the accomplishment. And he was in Puerto Rico on Saturday. And it was a tremendous outpouring from the town of Caguas, which is where he's from. That's where they did the whole, they did a parade and all sorts of things. So it was very well received, and I'm, I'm sure it would be very well received here in Hoyok as well. So in all seriousness, if, if you want to put a letter together, I do have contacts through some folks, so I'm happy to do that.
Motion would be to have everyone sign on. I'll work with Ryan to draft up a letter. I'll send it to everyone first. Do not reply all, open meeting law. Just reply back to me if you want certain changes. I will send it off to Counsel Valentin, as well as if anyone else has connections. But we'll, we'll mail it out, and then you can get the copy, and we'll, we'll go from there. And I will be happy to sign on to that, absolutely. Will you, will you also wear a Red Sox hat if he goes? Counsel McGivern?
I, I probably want to do something that a former counselor might, you know, be upset with me. But Counsel Divine, Patty Divine, was very instrumental in getting the World Series trophies to come to the merry ground for one of our summer picnics, which is kind of a giveaway picnic for all our, our writers. In that day, one of the ambassadors from the Red Sox asked me where, there was a certain cemetery over in South Hallie, Notre Dame, which is part of churches here in Hoyok, and how to get there. And I explained to him, and Patty heard us talking, and she goes, well, why are you going over there? And he says, well, my grandfather died before he could see the Sox win, this is 2004, the Sox win their first trophy. And I just wanted to bring it over and, you know, bring it to his gravesite. And Patty said, my father never saw the Sox win their first series. Can I go with you? Because her father was buried in the same cemetery. So we, under the radar, in this bus that is totally decorated with Red Sox and painted like a psychedelic 60s band, went into the cemetery. And people were running out of their houses, coming up to find the van, knowing what was inside the van. But there was two gravesites that were visited that, that day, and I think two happy Red Sox fans that got to see the trophy.
The motion, adding everyone on, is to receive, adopt, and I will get you something ASAP. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Counsel 27, from Counsel Leacy. Order at the City Council Ordinance Committee to accomplish a review of the city's signed ordinance alongside technical support and feedback from the planning board and legal department.
Receive, refer to ordinance.
To ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 28 from Counsel Leacy. That the city engineer research and provide the council with recommendations on how to change the ordinance that's related to downtown parking so businesses and residential need can best be met. So that'd be.
Take 28, 29.
And 29 is that section 86-97 of the city parking ordinance be struck from the city parking ordinance and all night parking, no person shall be allowed. So new language for it. So motion would be receive and refer to ordinance, a copy to the engineer.
A copy to the engineer. Can we have a copy to the, the parking committee also? And, and I, I believe Gladys LeBron Martinez and myself, you know, were asked to sit in this committee, which meant, rule was re-constructed sometime last year, where all the issues with parking meters, parking decks, downtown parking, and we got the Chamber of Commerce to send someone. It, it met once, and it hasn't met since. They're going through some RFP cross-process. I know Gladys has asked, I've asked, and I really would like to have that committee, if, if they're not gonna meet themselves, to bring them in in front of us. Because decisions are being made without input from us, and I, I think it's well, well intended. But I think, you know, we have to do this with, with everybody involved and everybody participating in the process. Because there's not only a lot at stake with terms of, as Counsel Barley said, you know, three months without parking tickets is, is a lot of revenue. And it also makes people not want to pay for parking when they understand that they're not gonna get a ticket. So if we could, just a copy to them, if anybody thinks of it, could you call the mayor or a DPW superintendent and kind of encourage them to get this, this committee to meet again?
So motion is to take up 28 and 29 together as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
To send to ordinance with a copy to the city engineer, the parking commission we're calling them, or committee?
If you could just send it to Mike McManus.
So Mike McManus?
Let him know that what we'd like to have.
The mayor, Chamber of Commerce, anyone else? Nope. All those in favor?
Aye.
30 from Counsel Leacy, that the city council ask our state delegation to file legislation to delete Mass General Law Part 1 Title VII, Chapter 40P, Section 4, which prohibits rent control ordinances.
Receive and refer to DGNR.
To DGNR, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 31 from Counsel Leacy, that the city council asks the state delegation to file legislation, this time to prohibit rent control ordinances in order to allow an exception for gateway cities to adopt rent control policies without having to reimburse property owners. The DGNR, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 32 from Counsel McGee, that the Board of Health Building Committee review 15 Shepherd Drive with regards to concern about expanding their driveway and excessive parking cars on the property in the front lawn, and report back their findings if permits and anything else were, were pulled for this. So I'd say, receive, send to the Board of Health Building Department, and send to DGNR.
Would that be public safety?
Well, we might have, it's a group home, so we might have to have the state delegation in to address some of the concerns. It's nothing that we can act on, other than if they're going beyond the footprint of the driveway, they'd need a permit. But with regards to all the other issues popping up, we need state delegation to weigh in. That's why.
Okay.
Counsel Tomlin.
It's all right with you, if I could add my name to that. I'm sort of familiar with that area and the residents. I got a couple of emails from a couple of the residents about, I'm sure that you got, about the issues with the new real poem.
Adding Counsel Tomlin. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-three, from Counsel McGee, that the DPW install new sidewalks on White Koff Ave. Motion would be receive, adopt, send to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Just got me on the list. Thirty-four, that the city engineer review White Koff Ave, the traffic flow as a cut-through street, and offer up suggestions on signage or other options to remedy the problem. Motion would be to receive, adopt, or receive, send a city engineer and a cop, and send it to Public Safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-five, that the city council provide proclamations for Veterans Day awardees. One amendment would be for the Public Servant of the Year, it's Public Safety of the Year. So, make a motion to amend that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And this would be to give out three proclamations at Veterans Day. Motion would be receive, adopt.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-six.
President, when is the ceremony?
Saturday, at the high school. There's a helicopter.
At nine, and the ceremony starts at ten.
Ceremony at ten, right.
Part of the president's report. Just kidding, moving on, moving on.
I just, Mr. President, I just want it to be repeated, because for the first time ever, it's not on Veterans Day in my memory.
True.
I just want people to understand, not complaining, but to understand that it's a day early. Most people are used to going to the War Memorial on Veterans Day.
You just go over that, Todd.
What was that?
You just went over that, right?
And it's at the
Joe's just reemphasizing.
I'm double dipping here.
Come on.
Makes these meetings go on and on and on.
Thirty-six, order that the Public Safety Committee invite in Wisteriahurst Museum Director to address safety of organic gardening practices at Wisteriahurst.
Receive and refer to Public Safety.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-seven
Make a motion to suspend the rules to take thirty-seven, forty, and forty-one as a package.
Second. Most suspended rules take thirty-seven, forty, forty-one. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-seven is twenty-two thousand five hundred from pay solicitor to pay assistant solicitor. Forty is one thousand six hundred from pay solicitor, pay principal clerk, twenty-one thousand eight sixty-three, to pay paralegal, twenty-three thousand four sixty-three. And forty-one is two thousand six hundred fifty from head clerk to, that would be the transfer we talked about earlier, about the union for the conservation position. All those are going to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-eight
Suspend the rules to take up thirty-eight and thirty-nine as a package.
Second.
Thirty-eight and thirty-nine as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-eight is from firefighters, two thousand twenty-eight dollars and seven cents, to injured on duty, of which there are one. And thirty-nine is six thousand two hundred thirty-seven to injured on duty, for patrolmen, of which there are five.
Make a motion, receive, pass to first reading?
Motion is receive, adopt, pass first reading or discussion. Counsel McGivern.
Pretty routine, is the transfer of money from a salary account into another salary account. Anytime a firefighter officer files for injured on duty, this is done for accounting purposes. We see this every agenda, we're gonna see this every agenda, because this happens, there are two pay periods, typically a month, this happens every pay period. The, I think if there's no questions, I would ask that we pass this this evening.
Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion would be to pass the second reading.
Pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk will call roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfers.
Valentin?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfers. Forty-two, from Counsel Roman, order that the city council amend section fourteen dash twelve of the corner ordinances to amend to allow for keeping of live poultry for purposes of fresh eggs.
Receive and refer to ordinance.
All those in favor?
Counsel McGee?
Yes.
Can I make an amendment to that?
Yep.
That the neighbors to be notified in a public hearing should take place?
That can all be discussed in ordinance.
I'm making amendment to this.
Second.
The amendment, where, hold on. So, where are you making the amendment?
I'd just like to add the language that, that the neighbors to be notified, and a public hearing should take place. And so, you know, if I'm thinking, if I have a neighbor, or if I'm doing it, I should have my neighbors be notified that I'm going to have livestock.
So, you're suggesting, we'll say at the end of it, that permitted by the Board of Health, so long as neighbors are given notice prior to
Well, can I make a friendly amendment to that, Mr. President?
Counsel Bartley.
With a counsel permission. Can we just, I don't wanna amend somebody's order when they're in absence, but can we just say, the ordinance committee should consider that kinda language? Is that okay, Jim? To say, because that's all, we're gonna consider anything, I mean, we'll forget about it if we don't
That's fine.
Yeah, so the city ordinance committee, as part of this, just consider neighbor notification and/or public hearings relative to this, just so we have it before us.
All right, so are you writing that in, or we're just making it
Can we write it in? Just so we, just so we, because with the Counsel Leahy's point, I just wanna
It's coming from
If we don't do it now, we'll never, we'll never remember.
All right, so, order that the city council amend, and after
Yeah.
Fresh eggs by permit from Board of Health, and consider
The ordinance
And that the ordinance committee consider notice requirement to
That's my motion.
And public hearing.
And public hearing. Everyone on that? That's the motion? Is there a second?
A second.
There was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I have it. So, to committee, ordinance committee, so that was approved, yeah, okay. So, forty-three, from Counsel Roman, order that the DPW repaint the parking lines at South Hoyok and Churchill neighborhoods. Parking lines have become faded.
Receive, adopt.
Motion is to receive, adopt, send to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty-four, from Counsel Ryan, order that the city council repost and refill the youth city council position. So, that'd be, doesn't that just go through the
Receive and refer to the schools. They're the ones that are supposed to refer to us.
Was it the school? I thought it was the group upstairs. I'm drawing a blank on the name.
Hoyok Task Force, I think you're thinking.
Yeah, wasn't, wasn't
I don't recall.
They're supposed to come from the schools.
All right, so, motion to
They're in the school system.
Receive, adopt, and send to the superintendent
Superintendent.
To have him
Receiver.
The receiver. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty-five, from Counsel Sullivan, Counsel McGee, that the bond council be invited to discuss the effects and options available in bonding for two new middle schools, the possibilities of longer-term bond, early retirement options, and alternative debt exclusions should be explored.
Can I add to that, Todd?
Adding Counsel Leahy.
Please add my name, too.
Yeah, also.
Counsel Leahy.
Bacon.
Bacon, Bartley. So, motion would be receive and sent to Finance.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty-six, from Counsel Sullivan, the base minimum to establish for stabilization fund as a percentage of the city budget. Restrictions on the use of excess funds should be considered. To bond payments support should be a major consideration. Finance?
Finance.
Motion is sent to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty-seven, from Counsel Sullivan, Counsel McGee, that the school department prepare a summary of potential savings associated with the two middle schools, also what other grants may be available to be taken. Motion is sent to Finance with a copy to the school department.
The department.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty-eight, from Counsel Sullivan, that the city assessor provide an opinion on the effect of the two middle schools on property taxes. New middle schools will make Hoyok more desirable place to raise families. I'd like to be added to that as well. Adding Counsel McGee. Send to Finance with a copy to the assessor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty-nine, from Counsel Sullivan, that Oped provide an opinion as to the possible effects of debt exclusion override to existing business community and the consequences of new business attraction. Can I make a friendly amendment to add in the Chamber of Commerce, Hoyok Taxpayers Association?
Yes.
Forget one?
Yep.
Anyone else, or?
No, those were the other two.
All right, adding in the Chamber of Commerce and Hoyok Taxpayers Association. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Adding Counsel McGee as well.
Like to send that one possibly to DGNR with copies to the Chamber and Oped and taxpayers.
Taxpayers, yeah. So, sending it to DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifty, from Counsel Bacon, that permit reconfiguration of Sunset and/or Asher Road or other streets in the neighborhood be considered once the temporary pilot project is completed.
Receive and refer to ordinance.
Receive and refer to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifty-one, from Counsel Valentin, that a handicap sign be placed at Fifteen School Street.
Ordinance with a copy to the Commission on Disabilities, please.
Motion is to send to ordinance and a copy to the Commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Fifty-two and fifty-three as a package, please, and send to ordinance.
Suspend the rules, take up fifty-two and fifty-three as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifty-two, that official petition notification process be instituted regarding resident parking-only requests, such as a petition notification process in place for speed humps via ordinance at the time. Fifty-three, that a resident parking-only ordinance for Pine Street voted on recently be reconsidered and signs be taken down by the DPW at this time. So, this is both to ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Can I be, is that okay with you for me to be signed on? Is this the one with, that I think we both received an email on that?
Well, the residents, some residents emailed all of us, yeah. Yeah, you can sign on if you want.
Sign on to both, Counselor?
Yes.
To both? Okay, adding on Counsel Lebron Martinez?
Yes, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Mr. President, I'd like to package fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, and fifty-seven.
Second.
Fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifty-four, sidewalk located at the southwest corner of Woods Ave and Hillside be repaired. Fifty-five, sidewalk at northwest side of Linden Street between West Franklin and McKenzie be repaired. Fifty-six, sidewalk on the east side of the road at the north end of Norwood Terrace be repaired. And fifty-seven, sidewalk at the west corner of Sergeant and Locust be repaired. Motion would be receive, adopt, and send to DPW. All those in favor?
Second.
All opposed?
Aye.
All those opposed? Fifty-eight, from Counsel Anderson Burgos, order a sign be placed at both ends of Monroe Street prohibiting large trucks from using it as a pass-through. Motion would be ordinance?
I think so. That becomes one of those issues to evaluate. I think, Jim, you had an order like that, right?
So, receive and refer to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifty-nine, from Counsel Anderson Burgos, that temporary speed humps be placed on Anderson Ave, and that a speed study be done at the corner of Sycamore and Anderson. Motion would be receive, adopt, send to DPW.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And sixty, from Counsel Bartley, the mayor and city auditor work with various department heads, thus impact the variety of capital budget to the city council for fiscal year two thousand, twenty, and subsequent years to not have a capital budget. It is short-sighted and ultimately very costly to the taxpayer.
Well, I'd like to send this to the Finance Committee for a discussion, and you can copy it to, send it to the mayor, to the auditor.
Motion is to receive, refer to Finance, copy to mayor and auditor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Did you add Sullivan to that?
Adding Counsel Sullivan.
And fix the spelling from short-sighted to shortsighted.
Oh, wow.
And fixing the
Wow.
Yeah, that's, wow.
Yeah, that's a good catch.
Sixty-one.
Like a spell.
Counsel Bartley, city assess whether no parking sign should be placed on either east or west side
Yes, that's to ordinance with a copy to city engineer.
Second.
So, what was that?
Ordinance.
Ordinance with a copy to city engineer, please.
Two ordinance with a copy to city engineer. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sixty-two, Counsel Bartley, that the HPD set up a traffic enforcement at the following areas for a few periods over the next month.
Yes, that would be to receive, adopt, refer, strike that. If we could, receive and adopt, refer to HPD, and I want to send a copy to Public Safety, please.
Motion is receive, adopt, send to HPD, and a copy to Public Safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sixty-three, from Counsel Bartley, the mayor and/or DPW superintendent send a communication to the city council regarding its unanimous approval order that supported the procurement of up to ten additional temporary speed humps.
I'd like to send this to the Finance Committee with a copy to the mayor and the DPW superintendent, so we can just get an answer.
Second.
Receive, send to Finance, copy to mayor and DPW superintendent. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
President, I'd like to take up, I spoke to Counsel President earlier today, sixty-four and sixty-five as a package.
Second.
Motion is to take up sixty-four and sixty-five as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sixty-four, from Counsel President, at the Law Department, give a legal opinion on whether or not panhandlers can be prevented from standing on the island in the middle of traffic due to safety.
A good counsel would like to go to the Law Department, Public Safety.
And sixty-five is that the DPW look into having a do-not-block-the-box install at the top of Shaw at North Hampton.
DPW for that one.
So, sixty-four is receive.
Refer to Lisi.
What was that? Send to, a copy to legal, but Public Safety. And sixty-five to
DPW.